All right, good morning ladies and gentlemen. Everyone please take their seats. The November 3rd, 2010 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. We always make a cautionary announcement before we start a session, and that is that this building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate, please leave through the exits and then our marshals will tell you when it's safe to re-enter. As I say, it's just a cautionary admonition, no reason to believe that this would take place. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend George Boggan, Metropolitan Community Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. May we begin this day, and each day, with a sense of gratitude, aware of the gifts we are given, gifts to enjoy and to share. May we begin this day and each day with a sense of responsibility, mindful that we are our brother's and sister's keeper and caretakers of our common home, the earth. May we begin this day and each day with a sense of empowerment, assured that we have courage for today and bright hope for tomorrow, confident that we can do all things through you who strengthens us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for our first item, Councilman Wolfson is going to recite the Declaration of Independence. No, I'm sorry. No, it just looked that way. I apologize. For our first item, he's going to honor our November Citizens of the Month. Councilman.
We the people. Good morning Las Vegas and everybody in attendance. It is my pleasure to announce the November Citizens of the Month. And whenever I do this, I like to reach out to people in the community and ask them for nominations, because who else better knows what citizens are doing great things for our citizens here in Las Vegas than people that are out there in the community? And a particular municipal court judge by the name of Judge Cedric Kearns contacted me and he said he had the perfect couple to nominate for our November Citizens of the Month. So that's what I'm going to do today. We're going to recognize a couple of fine people. Trevor Ford, owner of Ford Contracting, and his fiance Angela Ayala became interested in helping Judge Cedric Kearns's Youth Offender Program, which is a great program offered by our municipal court. Coincidentally, it was just highlighted in the Review Journal. It was a great spread about the great work that Judge Kearns and all of our folks in municipal court do for some of our youthful offenders. And Judge Kearns asked me to recognize Trevor Ford and Angela Ayala for their contributions to his program. So I'd like to first call up Judge Cedric Kearns to talk to us about Trevor and Angela, and then we'll call up Trevor and Angela. So Judge Kearns, how about a round of applause for Judge Kearns?
Mayor, Councilman Wolfson, Council, good morning. I met Trevor a few months ago, and I was lucky enough to rope Trevor into lunch. And then when we were talking at lunch, I was telling him a little about my program, and he said the magical words. He said, "Whatever I can do for you, I will." And so I said, "Well, come to court." And so I got him to come to court. And that weekend, while we're talking to our youth offenders, we do community projects. I let these offenders know that, you know, they've made a mess out of the community, so we're going to clean it up. Well, we had an individual who was in Councilman woman Tarkanian's ward, who we needed to abate the property. The gentleman had a stroke, he was in a wheelchair, his property had problems. And so what I did is I said, "Instead of having to pay someone to come out there, let's send my defendants out there." And Trevor happened to be in court that day, and afterwards he said, "Judge, can I help out?" I said, "Sure, come on down." And Saturday morning, he pulls up and he's got this dump truck, he's got donuts, coffee, shovels, and his fiance. And by the end of the morning, we filled up three dumpsters or two dumpsters, his dump truck, and the place looked great. And Trevor just loaded up, I didn't get a chance to thank him, you know, and then he left, and I got an email from him a couple weeks later saying, "Well, when's our next project?" And so I told Trevor, I said, "Well, this weekend what we're doing is we're doing a family project, because not only are we repairing the community, but we're repairing the family." And so we were going to have a picnic with the family along with the defendants. And I said, "I'd like you to go." And he said, "Well, what can I bring?" And I said, "I don't know, I'm not handling this. One of the parents is handling it, contact her." So I show up at the picnic, and there's this big barbecue set. I didn't know this, but Trevor bought all the food for the barbecue, for the picnic. Him and his fiance cooked all the food, so the families could spend time together. And then when I went to thank Trevor, I didn't realize that he cleaned up all the mess, he took his barbecue and he was gone. And so I caught Councilman Wolfson at a recovery celebration for Recovery Month, and I said, "You know, there's some individuals that I need to thank." And so I asked him if this is the way, and he said, "Send me an email." And so I'm so thankful that you did this, and I appreciate this, and I'm so thankful for community partners, for my court to be successful, I need community partners, and there's so many people that deserve this, but here are two people who are definitely deserving, and so I thank you.
Well, there's nothing I didn't do anything. I appreciate you thanking me. All I did was ask staff to make up a few things. So let's get Trevor Ford and Angela Ayala up here. And we've got a couple of presentations. Our first presentation, if you look to your right, the unveiling of this plaque, what do you call it? You don't call it a plaque, you call it a... A street sign. It's a street sign that says, and Trevor, why don't you turn around so everybody in Las Vegas can look at you. It's a street sign that says, "City of Las Vegas, Citizen of the Month, Trevor Ford and Angela Ayala," and that's going to be posted outside of City Hall here for the entire month of November. So that's kind of cool. And then secondly, we have in my hand here a certificate recognizing both of you folks as Citizens of the Month. And Judge Kearns, the thanks goes to these folks, because they stepped up to the plate to help you and your program and young offenders. So congratulations. And who is going to speak, one or both of you? Angela?
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to Judge Kearns, because the program that he has got going is such a wonderful thing, and such wonderful for these young kids to realize that there is so much more out there for them to work towards. And as long as we all get involved, I think it could be just such a wonderful, wonderful thing. Thank you.
Judge Kearns is the one to thank, we just managed to be there to help him. Thank you. Our next item, recognition of Native American Heritage Month, has been rescheduled, so now we're going to have Councilman Ross recognize the upcoming Veterans Week activities. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Wolfson, thank you for recognizing those wonderful people, you as well, Judge, because they're making a difference in people's lives, and that's important for us here in the city. Yesterday, we went to the polls and cast our votes, exercising our rights as United States citizens to have a say in who represents us and how this country is governed. So it's only appropriate that this week, we recognize the men and women who played a vital part in giving us that right, our veterans. From the time of the American Revolution, our soldiers have sacrificed to keep this country free, and as important, we remember them and we thank them often. Each year, of course, in downtown Las Vegas, a parade is held in honor of our veterans, but this year, there's much more. In addition to the parade organized by VFW Post 1753, the oldest post in southern Nevada, this year, the American Heroes Challenge will be held at the Clark County Shooting Park on November 6th and 7th. This is a huge event, it's a second annual event, and will probably go on for years to come. This is an event where our first responders and our tactical teams from around the country come and compete, and it's free to the public. So folks, I encourage you to come on out and take a look at what these men and women do for us. All of the proceeds from this event go towards the much-needed Veterans Memorial in the city of Las Vegas, and that's really exciting for us. I know Mayor Protam, it's been a high priority of yours, so this is a good thing. A few weeks ago, let me back up. Also on the weekends of November 5th and 12th, the Fremont Street Experience will be hosting a Patriot Party with events that will highlight what our veterans do and what they've done for us. A few weeks ago, my good friends Billy Sowjak and Mark Christensen brought to my attention all of these events going on this week, and thought it was only appropriate that the city of Las Vegas recognize our veterans in some way. And I thought that was a great idea. So today, I have a proclamation, but first I want to bring up Esther Carter to talk about this great parade that we're going to have. And then Esther, it's only fitting that a proclamation be given to somebody, so I'm going to read that proclamation after you talk to us about the parade.
Good morning, everybody. The parade this year is going to be on Thursday, November 11th. I wish that Billy Sowjak and Mark Christensen were here. They're great guys, it's been a pleasure for me to work with them this year to help them bring all of the events to the downtown area. But the parade will start at 10:00 AM, Thursday morning, November 11th. It will be on the downtown parade route. We are changing a few things this year. There will be bleachers for people to sit on, but it's first come, first served, so you need to get there early. Parking is available in the Fremont Street Experience parking garage, and this year, we're putting the mobile stage on the opposite side of Neonopolis, so it will be on Ogden and Fourth Street. So if you want to hear the parade as it goes by, you need to move down a little bit to the north of the Fremont Street Experience. This is the largest parade west of the Mississippi. These guys have worked really hard to bring everything together, and they're so busy today getting ready for it, they just, they weren't able to make it. So on behalf of Bill Sowjak and Mark Christensen, I'm sure they would love to be here, but they're busy planning all the activities. So everybody come to the parade, we all have it off, it's going to be a great fun parade.
And with that, Esther, this is the proclamation. It is our honor and privilege to recognize the men and women who have served and continue to serve our country. We, the mayor and the city council of the city of Las Vegas proudly proclaim November 5th through November 12th as Veterans Week in the city of Las Vegas, and encourage our citizens to join us as we honor all of those who have made America the greatest nation in the world. Thank you very much.
If anybody knows of a hotel that will allow a human being to bring a bulldog to stay overnight, please call my office, because I ran into the greatest bulldog that I've ever run into in my life. Bulldog was walking around Coronado, and I understand that the bulldog is trained to take care of veterans who have been injured. And I asked the owner whether or not if I could have the bulldog to walk in the parade with, and he said if he could find me a place, and I just don't know of the place. So if anybody has a place, I'm... Okay, fine. No, they really are looking for a hotel, but I'm looking for a place where they can stay, and the bulldog will come up here and participate in the parade. And we always walk the parade, so I'll have that. It's a great bulldog, it's one of the great bulldogs of all time. Okay, now that I've gotten that out of the way, I'd like to invite Chief Mike Myers, UMC CEO Kathy Silver, and YMCA President Mike Luby to join us at the podium. The city of Las Vegas has joined the University Medical Center and YMCA of southern Nevada to provide the community a great opportunity to learn CPR free of charge. This free 15-minute CPR training highlights Save a Life Week, November 13th through 20th. The Citizen CPR Foundation has selected Las Vegas to receive 500 CPR mannequins that are making training stops throughout the country as part of Save a Life Week. The city, UMC, and YMCA have organized several training sessions with the goal of training more than 3,000 people in a simpler method of CPR that does not require mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. Chief, where are you? Chief, I want to thank you and the city's partners for taking on this important training to make the community a safer place. You know, we've been briefed recently as far as sprinklers and new fire codes and how residents and residential units could be affected. And during that briefing, I said, "It might be a good idea for everybody in the city to know about CPR, because what would be better than to be able to save a life?" And I was told by one of your deputy chiefs that such training would take place, and this is the ideal opportunity for everybody in the community to really learn something important. Can you imagine if somebody was having a heart attack and you're standing there, you don't know how to help them, and this will give us an opportunity to really be prepared and to be able to help and assist our fellow citizens? So I think this is a great program, and I want to present each of you with a proclamation declaring November 13th through 20th, Save a Life Week in the city of Las Vegas. Could you please tell us where we can get a little more information about the training? Thank you.
Well, you can, we'll have a lot of news events coming up. Abby, can you come up with David Slattery also? I want to make sure we recognize you guys. There'll be a lot of opportunities on the news, and then of course, on the radios here coming up, but LasVegasNevada.gov/SaveALife for that website, and you can go there and get all the information. Got some great partners with the University Medical Center, we could not have done this without you. And of course, the YMCA Southern Nevada, Mike, fantastic. We are very excited about this week, Mayor. Our goal, train 3,000 people in CPR in that week, really get the community out to these community centers, meet your firefighters, get out to the fire stations, 15 minutes of their time.
That's all.
That's all. We're going to teach them chest compression only CPR, and we really think from the people that we teach that week, that come through those next few months, that we might save a life here, and that's important to know. So I can't thank the partners enough, this is a big event, and we're very excited to host this here in Las Vegas.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Just again, echo the chief's comments, we just appreciate being a part of the program and being asked to participate, and it's going to, as he said, the most important thing is we'll end up saving a life.
Likewise, I think we owe the fire department a lot of thanks here. We appreciate being asked to be a part of this, and I think we absolutely are going to save a lot of lives.
Thank you very, very much, and thanks for being down here today.
If I could have your attention, I'm here for one reason today. I had an individual come to my barber shop after I had one of my episodes at the barber shop to save my life. And believe it or not, he just came from a Save a Life like this through his union. And without him doing what he did, I probably wouldn't be here today. So it does, it does work, it does, it does. So I'm asking people, please go out and support this, it is, it is important.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thank you. Thank you. And it's for you. Please return the cover, though. Oh, you know, we do have a budget issue here in the city. For our guests, you can keep the cover, but Chief, please, this afternoon. Okay, for our final item, I want to invite Planning and Development Director Margot Wheeler to join us for an award that recognizes one of the truly special places in our city. The historic Fifth Street School has been recognized with a Preservation Honor Award from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The school, which I like to call an intellectual marketplace, is one of 23 award winners honored... Right? Okay, 23 award winners honored by the National Trust during its 2010 National Preservation Conference last week in Austin, Texas. Margot, tell us a little bit more about this. This is, this is really great, because what we did as a council, we had a vision, and our vision was that we were going to preserve our history here, and we weren't going to implode it as has happened in prior years. And one of the first projects that we had was the Fifth Street School. It really was a rather dilapidated substation for Metro, having just deteriorated over the years, and we decided to go in and clean it up, and now it's a jewel in the downtown. It's really something very, very special, because we have lectures there, we have poetry reading there. This weekend, we're going to have a whole literacy fair take place there, so it's just a wonderful, wonderful addition to our community, and it would have been a hole in the ground with a lot of rubble had we not taken this position. And I'm very pleased that we've been recognized for this. Thanks, Warner.
Mayor and council, this is another example of the city of Las Vegas receiving national recognition for something that is not always known about our community. And through the leadership of the mayor and the city council, and their appointed members of the Historic Preservation Commission, we have the opportunity to redefine the city of Las Vegas by valuing our wonderful historic treasures here, and the Fifth Street School is one of the first of those. Just last month, we, the Fifth Street School hosted the State Conference of the American Planning Association, where we used the rooms there and the facilities there to hold our statewide conference. So it is not only of value to the citizens, to those that are located there, but we will also be using it when we bring other guests to the city for functions such as the conference. Additionally, as part of this redefinition of valuing our historic treasures in the community, the Fifth Street School is just one of the first, because as we go forward with the museum, the mayor's mob museum, and the Neon Boneyard Park, both of which will be open very soon, you will have an entire group of historic treasures to be visited within the downtown area. And then we anticipate the West Side School also becoming one of those attributes that we have. So we're creating, through the council's leadership, a whole new definition of the city of Las Vegas and what it has to offer. And by having these national awards given to us, it shows the recognition that we are getting for their leadership and what we're bringing to bear in the downtown of this community.
Thank you very much. Courtney, do you want a piece? Oh, she, everyone's good, though. Thank you very much, and this is for you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay. 678, 10-7, from Ward 6, and their leader is Vanessa Albertorio. Vanessa, please stand up. And they're here today to earn their citizenship badge, so if everyone, all the scouts, please stand up, we'll get the TV to take a nice picture of you, and you'll be able to watch us on Channel 2, if you could stay up that late. Okay, and I see some parents are there, too. Thank you very much for taking such good care and putting your children in a good place, we appreciate it, and you're very welcome here. And let us know at the end of the experience, by way of a letter to us, telling us what the youngsters picked up as a result of being here today. We would appreciate that, and then we'll get back to you on that. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to item number 10. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Please, Your Honor, we have one item, item number 48, bill number 2010-31. Brad, if you would like that, be held in advance until our December the 15th, 2010 meeting.
All right.
Are there any other items, councilmembers? CNN, you want to make a motion to bring this item forward, take the appropriate action, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
You're asking about pulling out any? Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Are there any we want to pull out? Is that what you said?
No, no.
Okay, just, got you.
All right. Close, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item number 11 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of October 6th, 2010. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Yes, Your Honor, no addition to release, I make motion to approve minutes.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Items 12 through 43 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, they're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Yes, Your Honor, we need to bring item number 28 forward, please.
28, all right. Any others?
I'd like to speak on 23.
All right, 23. Any others? All right, and then with that understanding, could we have a motion on items 12 through 43 with the exception of 23 and 48?
Yes, Your Honor, make motion to approve this item, for all conditions, please.
Thank you. Please vote on that. Close. Item 23 is approval of a new pistol permit license, Super Pawn, 307 South Decatur Boulevard, and this is in Ward 1. Thank you very much for joining us. Ms. Ingram, go ahead. You wanted to speak.
You missed 23.
Yes, this is 23.
Okay, go ahead.
No, no, you go, you wanted to speak.
Oh, me, go ahead? Okay. I'd like to have this explained, really. Approval of a pistol license, Super Pawn, 307 South Decatur. So what's, that's a pawn shop.
Okay. Ms. Lazovich, do you want to explain what is being sought here? So Ms. Ingram will feel that she can sleep at ease.
Sure. Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road, here today on behalf of Super Pawn. Carolyn Seoka is also with me, if you have any questions for her. This would just allow us to take in and pawn on guns that are legally permitted by the person who owns the guns. We will not absolutely unequivocally be selling any guns out of this location, or for that matter, any of our stores in Las Vegas. But in particular, we agreed to a condition at this particular site that we would not be selling guns. We are not selling guns, we are complying with that condition. However, this does allow us to do what we do at every other location in the Super Pawn stores around Las Vegas, which is allow us to take them in.
Okay, that's enough for me.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we have a motion, Councilman?
Yes, could I just, I just, because I've had some questions on this, and I know there's been some thoughts back and forth within the neighborhoods. You understand what they're saying, and your group agrees with that, that that's all right, because they're not going to be selling any guns out of there? They ship the guns away, and as I understand, the police have said at several of our meetings with residents that they prefer it that way, because it helps them keep track of guns. You know, in a pawn shop, there are certain laws that you have to follow, correct me if I'm wrong, that you have, laws that you have to follow in order to be able to take them in, and information you have to provide the police, which is therefore helpful to them in other areas and other things, having the names of those individuals.
So our concern is no sales out of there.
There will be no sales, okay. Because, you know, we had the gentleman from your group call, too, and I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, let's vote on that, please. Close. Motion carries, thank you. Item 28 is approval of a Ward of Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number 090143-LD, Construction Administration Agreement for the Las Vegas Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement, located at 300 Stewart Avenue, Department of Public
to amend their agreements for a development agreement and for a project management agreement in Symphony Park. I'm going to give a brief PowerPoint presentation. Our relationship with Newland is a little bit complex, and it's evolved over time over the past five years. So I'm going to go over three main points. Our original relationship with Newland in working on the development of the 61 acres known as Symphony Park. Second, I'm going to look at the existing relationship as it stands today. And then third, going to make a recommendation on revising our relationship, both through these two agreements, to reflect some changes that the city would like to occur in Symphony Park, as well as to take advantage of some new opportunities. The relationship between the city and Newland, as I mentioned, it's been a long and a good relationship, where we have a great partner in helping us build Symphony Park, which, as you know, is the major undertaking of the city for redevelopment in downtown Las Vegas. We retained Newland in December of 2005 as project manager, and they've helped us with an ambitious scope of work in Symphony Park, where they're helping us with the day-to-day operations, including project management, marketing, coordinating construction, including the installation of infrastructure, and development negotiations. I would mention, as I speak, the Smith Center for the Performing Arts is under construction, and Newland's been a great partner in helping us coordinate that construction, as well as the upcoming utilities and street network that is going to be installed in Symphony Park to support the opening of the Smith Center in the spring of 2012. Back in December of 2005, we adopted a three-tiered compensation model for a number of reasons. One, we had a great partner, a great development partner in Newland, as the, one of the largest privately-held residential builders in the country, experienced with developing master plans throughout the country. We thought we had a great partner to help us both with coordinating the land development, as well as being a development partner itself. And we had some great expertise, both with Dan Benep, as well as with Rita Brandon, who's currently heading the Newland office. So that three-tier compensation model was pretty straightforward. It was designed to rather have a big cash liability for managing the project, to use our equity in the land to help with overall project management. So we agreed to pay Newland a cost for their staffing and overhead expenses directly related to overseeing the construction and the project management. We thought this was a good approach. Some consultants, you pay cost-plus. This was really cost, so we thought that was a good approach. We weren't allowed to carry that cost with interest until private land sales occurred, and we thought that was important back in 2005, because we could defer cash payments when we had private land sale revenue. Second, Newland was going to receive a 4% fee against private land sales in Symphony Park, and again, that would help to defer our cash payment to Newland for their project management when we had private activity. And then finally, we gave Newland rights to develop residential in Symphony Park in four blocks. This was the original master plan back in 2005. If you see on the overhead, the land that is shaded in yellow was Newland's original development parcels. They originally had four parcels. Our plan has evolved over time, so this is not the current plan. You see some uses that have stayed, such as performing arts, and you see some uses as well that have not stayed. But this slide isn't, and this illustration is intended to depict the significance of Newland's rights. We wanted them as a residential partner, and because of that, we gave them some residential land to develop in Symphony Park as part of that three-tiered compensation model. So that's how we started. Where are we at today? Newland's current role as project manager and developer. Newland has responsibilities, again, as I mentioned, that are defined in a project management and consulting agreement. I'll refer to that as the PMA. The original PMA, since 2005, has been amended six times. This is not uncommon in a large master plan undertaken by a city, where plans change over time, new opportunities come up. And so because of that, we've amended that master plan, the one that was original from 2005. We've amended it several times to take advantage of some opportunities that we're working on today. We've amended Newland's development rights because of those master plan changes, and because of the desire to pursue other options in Symphony Park. We've revised the fee structure to Newland and the timing of those fees. So the model that we have now in place today is still a three-tiered model, but there's some differences. Today, we wanted to avoid an interest expense in carrying that ongoing project management cost, that, essentially, that staff and overhead cost. So instead of carrying that with interest, we realized that through the resources, through the redevelopment agency, we had some funds to pay that cost on an ongoing basis and avoid that interest, and we thought that was a win-win for the city and Newland. Second, Newland has reduced their expense over time. As the projects evolved, we've made a lot of progress. We've installed a lot of the infrastructure. We have the Cleveland Clinic, Lou Rubo Center for Brain Health completed and open for operations. And we have the Smith Center, who is well on to being completed, originally for a finish date of March of 2012, and we heard as early as today that they're ahead of schedule. So the work is lessened, and with that, the staffing expense for Newland is lessened as well. And we've reduced Newland's development rights. As it stands today, Newland's current development rights are five parcels. You see they're highlighted in yellow, parcel C, parcel D, parcel F, parcel N, and parcel O1. So as it stands today, under our current agreements, that PMA, the project management agreement, and our DDA, our development agreement, Newland has the right to develop five parcels. So if you compare and contrast that with the 2005 master plan, it's less acreage. Less acreage means less development. Less development means less development for Newland. So their interest, their development interest has reduced, and that's part of the lower compensation model that exists today versus the original relationship back in 2005.
Can I ask, when you say they have the right to develop, does that mean we've given them the land?
That means that the land is under contract, and they have the exclusive right to develop that land, and it also means that we've defined the terms of how they develop it. So we define the purchase price.
So you define the terms. Who pays, who pays for the land, though? What, where does compensation from the land come into play?
As it stands today, Newland would pay the city and its affiliate companies when they close escrow on a piece of land, and only when they're ready to build would they close escrow, and they would pay land sale revenue to the city. So we don't have any land sale revenue from the land today, if and when Newland exercises their right to close on any of those five parcels, as it stands today. Only then would we get land sale revenue.
Okay, so we don't know what we're getting for those. By the way, I, I know, Mrs. Brendan, Brendan has done an excellent job, and I'm not questioning any of this, except I do have some concern about the monies that are involved in when the payment is coming on this. And it seems we have, this is going to be expected, and then that's going to be expected. And, and we're changing all the time. So I'm just wondering, are we getting monies for these, this land? And I know, for example, we gave the land to the Rubo Center. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
And so, and I understand that, nonprofit organizations such as that, but with these parcels, particularly the location so close to Charlie Palmer, expected to come in, I just wondered if we would know what we would be getting from those.
The short answer is yes. We know today, in the exist, under the existing agreement, what we would get if they purchased a parcel. And in the new relationship, as I'm going to describe in just a moment, we know what we would be getting for each parcel under a new relationship, if and when they purchase a parcel. So we do have that defined, and it's clearly defined. The big question is, will Newland for cer, for certain buy the land and close escrow? And just like with any development agreement, the short answer is, we don't know. There's risk. There's development risk in terms of the developer being able to design the project, be able to fund the project through debt and equity, be able to lease or sell units for residential. So there's development risk, just like with any project in any land that we have under contract.
Right, any time you build, right.
Where I can't say for certainty whether or not the land will close or not.
I, I just wondered if you were to sell the land today, what would the cost be?
And I'm going to explain that I have a slide that shows specifically, if we were to sell the land today, what would we get for each parcel.
Thank you.
So, perfect segue to my next slide. As it exists today, under Newland's current development rights, we have an agreement for five parcels of land, and because Newland's development program is for residential, and in consideration of the fact that the residential market has changed over time significantly over the last two, three years, we have some what I would call staggered development rights. Newland has the right to acquire each parcel against a certain schedule, or in other words, by a certain date, which is shown in red. And then they have a purchase price obligation that if and when they purchase that parcel and close escrow, they have to pay land sale proceeds to the city. So that purchase price schedule is shown here. That was, has been negotiated over time. We've, typically, when we negotiate prices for land, we look at the market value, we follow our own appraisal process, we also look at what the market can bear. Newland's development program has been a significant program where they were looking to develop well over 2,000 residential units. So with that development program, they can afford a certain purchase price. So the current price schedule, which was negotiated with Newland, includes a specific price and a specific deadline to close on the purchase for each parcel. So you see there parcel C, N, D, F, and O1. The earliest deadline is August of 2011. The latest deadlines for parcels N and O1 are January of 2019. And that's done for a very specific reason. It's a complex development program. It, there is a timing issue of building the residential over time. There's only so much residential that any developer could build in any one time, and so we do have that staggered schedule as it exists today, given the Newland, the development right to build on each of those parcels against that schedule with those purchase prices. One thing I would add, which isn't written on the slide, is in our development agreement as it stands today, Newland has the right to use all or part of the land sale proceeds for remediation up to a cost cap, which is determined by a risk assessment, which really means, in layman's terms, an environmental engineer will tell Newland and the city what it's going to cost to treat the soil and remediate the site in order to enable the developers to build on the site, and that'll be a certain number, and we will pay remediation expense as the city in the event that, A, that's needed, and B, that the party that we feel is obligated to that expense, Union Pacific, does not pay for that expense. And so that was part of a way to mitigate the developers' risks, so they know, going into developing each piece of land, and we've done this for every parcel of land in Symphony Park, the developer knows its risks, they know what the cost is going to be to develop, and they're able to get over the final threshold, the land, develop, and get the building online. The main benefit that the city and the redevelopment agency get from all of our transactions in Symphony Park is a finished product. We benefit mostly from the tax increment, the new taxes coming into the city, and the redevelopment agency when a project is built. So while land sale revenue is important to defer some of our costs of basically making the project happen, putting in all the streets, all the utilities, to enable developers to build on each of these parcels, the main benefit, the main consideration, is that tax increment coming into the redevelopment agency. And part of our package, all along with Newland, has been that the agency would retain all the tax increment from each successful project. So that's an important consideration, both in the current deal, as well as what we're going to be proposing. So that's, walks you through where we were, and then where we're at today with our current relationship. Now I'd just like to take a moment to walk you through our new relationship that is proposed by these two council actions. What we're proposing to do is to continue to use Newland as a project manager. As I mentioned, they've been an important part of the success that we've had since 2005. Our existing project management agreement is due to expire in December of 2005, so this would extend that project management agreement to June of 2011, with one, one-year option at the city's discretion. The importance of that and the timing of that is that we have a number of agreements under negotiation, including the Cleveland Clinic deal and their interest in developing in Symphony Park. And so for continuity, we are recommending that we keep Newland as a project manager through at least June, June of 2011. We're revising that three-tier compensation model whereby that 4% fee, we're removing that. There's some uncertainty with that, as far as when we would have to have a cash payout, how much the cash would be. 4% fee was, back in 2005, was, agreed that the city would pay that fee against a private land sale price, and that creates a lot of uncertainty for what cash payments the city might have. And so as part of this new arrangement and new relationship with Newland, we're proposing to eliminate that 4% fee.
Mr. Arn?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Mr. Arn, if you just go back, and I know this is the new agreement, if we can go back to the overhead. Go back to the overhead for me. I'm talking to the IT folks. The previous slide that they had. Go forward on their slide. One more. Okay. No, go back.
Okay.
There we go. Talking about the 4% additional fee, in the new, in the proposed plan today, you're talking about removing it. You, you're looking to remove it. Take a step backwards and just give me more clarity in regards to that 4% in the original proposal from 2005. What, what does that 4% really represent when you say 4% goes towards the fee of the land sale?
And I, I appreciate that the bullet probably isn't very explanatory. The 4% fee, again, that was compensation. Basically, in '05, they set up a new project management team solely dedicated to helping us with the 61 acres in Symphony Park. 2005. Our existing project management agreement is due to expire in December of 2005, so this would extend that project management agreement to June of 2011 with one, one-year option at the city's discretion. The importance of that and the timing of that is that we have a number of agreements under negotiation, including the Cleveland Clinic deal and their interest in developing the Symphony Park. And so, for continuity, we are recommending that we keep Newland as a project manager through at least June of 2011. We're revising that three-tier compensation model whereby that 4% fee, we're removing that. There's some uncertainty with that as far as when we would have to have a cash payout, how much the cash would be. 4% fee was, back in 2005, was agreed that the city would pay that fee against a private land sale price. And that creates a lot of uncertainty for what cash payments the city might have. And so, as part of this new arrangement and new relationship with Newland, we're proposing to eliminate that 4% fee.
Mr. Arn?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Mr. Arn, if you just go back, and I know this is the new agreement, if we can go back to the overhead, go back to the overhead for me. I'm talking to the IT folks. The previous slide that they had, go forward on their slide. One more. Okay. No, go back.
Okay.
There we go. Talking about the 4% additional fee, in the new, in the proposed plan today, you're talking about removing it, you're looking to remove it. Take a step backwards and just give me more clarity in regards to that 4% in the original proposal from 2005. What does that 4% really represent when you say 4% goes towards the fee of the land sale?
And I appreciate that the bullet probably isn't very explanatory. The 4% fee, again, that was compensated. Basically, in '05, they set up a new project management team solely dedicated to helping us with the 61 acres in Symphony Park. They had a number of costs, we covered some of their direct costs, the staffing and the overhead. We also gave Newland development rights because we recognized they were a developer, a great residential partner. One of the other things we recognized is that having a third party helping us with negotiations could help with those private land sales. So, it was really a performance-driven compensation benefit to the Newland, to the extent that Newland can negotiate high land sale prices for private sales. And we have a number of them which Newland, in their support of the city, has negotiated. They would earn a 4% fee on a private land sale when it occurs. So, let me give you an example. We negotiated a development agreement with Newland at the lead as the negotiating arm with the developer CityCorps to develop the Charlie Palmer Hotel. If and when that parcel closes, and they're still under a contract to close, Newland as it stands today in our relationship would be entitled to a 4% fee against that purchase price. So, if we were to look at all the existing development agreements that Newland's negotiated on our behalf that are for private land sales, they include at a minimum the CityCorps Charlie Palmer project, the World Jury Center project. That would be, 4% of those sale prices would be a significant number. We believe today it would be in the range, depending on the timing of when those parcels close, between $4 million and $6 million. Potentially going out into the future, it could be even more if we kept that existing relationship. So, what we're proposing to do is to eliminate that fee as part of a broader package to reduce our overall compensation to Newland and to revise their development rights in exchange for the city getting more development flexibility for some of the parcels that we've referenced in the map. So, that 4% fee is one component of the pay structure to Newland, but an important component and one in trying to resolve the relationship moving forward in what's in the best interest of the city, in the best interest of Newland. And it's also simple and easy to understand. We thought that was a good approach and the city and Newland agree to the approach.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're removing the 4% fee, we're keeping the cost structure the same, but we've reduced the project management team because the work's reduced and because Newland continues to look, look for efficiency gains. Right now, our project management team is three staff from Newland, inclusive of Rita Brandon. So, I'd like to thank Rita and her team for continuing to look at efficiency gains on how we efficiently manage Symphony Park. We've also revised the development rights for Symphony Park as part of this package. For parcels C and N, which were the two parcels on the southern end of that five-block campus, we are proposing that Newland retain hard development rights, which is just a way of saying that they would keep the unilateral right to develop those two parcels. We have negotiated a new price schedule. And then for the remaining three parcels, parcels D, F, and O1, we're proposing to give Newland soft development rights, giving the city the right to terminate their right to purchase and develop any one of those parcels if we reach an agreement with a third party. And I'm going to flip backwards on the map just to show you the importance of that. If you look at the map, again, parcel C is the parcel to the top left, parcel N is the parcel to the bottom left, parcels D, F, and O1, as you can see, almost line up in a straight line. And when combined with the parcels to the north of those parcels, represents an important opportunity for the city moving forward to consider changes to the master plan in the development of Symphony Park. Parcel E, World Jury Center, we still have a commitment from the developer, World Jury Center, to develop that project. And parcel PQ, we have a commitment from Forest City to develop a hotel casino project. But as development evolves over time and as master plans change and evolve over time, we think it's an important right for the city to have, to have the ability to remaster-plan the northern ends of Symphony Park. And we've had a long and productive discussion with Newland as our project manager about the significance of this, and we're in agreement that this flexibility for the city makes sense, given what's happened in the economy and also given is what is happening in terms of private development opportunities that we may think come available in the immediate future. So, in that respect, there's a logic to packaging the development rights this way. So, going back to the previous slide that I was on, we're changing the rights on D, F, and O1 and limiting Newland's right to develop. They still will have a right to develop, but the city, through its affiliate companies in the agreement, will have a right to terminate the agreement for any one or all those parcels if we reach an agreement with a third party. And that's, I can't stress that enough. Part of this package is, the world's changed, the economy's changed, there are also new market opportunities that we want to take advantage of and look at and explore. And so, because of that, we think this package makes sense, it keeps Newland as a residential partner, but it also gives the city the flexibility on the northern end of Symphony Park.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Arn, go back to the former slide with the parcels. Okay, I understand Newland will retain parcel C and N for the residential development. And the city of Las Vegas is looking to maintain more flexibility as it relates to D, F, and O1. Speak to me in regards to O2, being that you have Newland Development there as well.
There, this site plan, as I mentioned, it's evolved over time and there have been some recent changes. You see actually, if you have really good eyesight on parcel L and O2, we actually have Newland Residential written in on each of those parcels. So, I, parcel L is toward the bottom left of the plan and parcel O2 is to the right of parcel O1. And those are not illuminated in yellow. We had Newland Residential written in on that plan, and this is an important point and I'm glad you raised it, is Newland actually had development rights to develop parcel L and parcel O2 as part of one of the prior amendments to their development agreement and their development rights. One thing that we've changed is, we've, as I mentioned, we've been reducing Newland's development rights over time, still keeping them as a partner at Symphony Park and an important partner, but reducing their development rights over time to give us more market flexibility. And Newland's been very cooperative and been a great partner in that and working with us to reduce those rights. So, in a prior amendment, they not only had the rights to develop the parcels in yellow, Newland also had the right to develop parcel L and parcel L2. And through one of the recent amendments, Newland actually waived their right to develop those parcels entirely in a good faith gesture to support the city's effort to develop Symphony Park and to respond to opportunities to master plan. And as the Smith Center is filled out, as Cleveland Clinic and that relationship evolves, having that flexibility both on L and O2 is really important. So, again, this is just one of those intermediary steps between wherever we're at in 2005 and how we ended up where we're at today.
So, in essence, as far as the project management agreement that you mentioned earlier in your conversation, that this has been amended up to six times?
The project management agreement has been amended six times and the development agreement has been amended twice since the original agreement.
And so, L and O2 were a part of those amendments?
Correct. So, in the most recent amendment, Newland released its right to develop L and O2. So, as it stands today, if you didn't take any action on these items, Newland's development rights as they exist today are those five parcels in yellow.
Okay, so, it would be fair to say that L and O2 still will, L and O2 is in the hands of the city of Las Vegas?
Correct. Independent of any action you take or do not take today, the city has the right to use and develop L and O2 as the city sees fit.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mayor, if I may, Bill, as you wrap this up, I just want to make a couple of comments because I see this brand in the audience today. Mayor and councilmembers, it's important to know, and Councilwoman Barlow mentioned the changes, I mean, the economy's been terrible and we've had to be flexible, we've had to adjust. And I want to say this about Newland, is they've hung in there with us. You catch the vision, Newland catches the vision of what Symphony Park and downtown will be one day, and I think that's significant. So, I want to thank them for being a great part of the city of Las Vegas and hanging in there with us because we're going to come out of this and I just, I just want you to know that, Rita. Thank you.
Thank you. So, where does that leave us today in answering the earlier question from Councilwoman? What are we looking at in terms of our new price schedule? What we've realized is that as a package, again, for the city getting the right to develop those three northernmost parcels, D, F, and O1, as it sees fit, which may include Newland developing it, or it may include going with a new third-party opportunity, the new price schedule was reduced in consideration of that. And so, we have a packaged price schedule for the five parcels. The price schedule we've done for parcel C, N, D, F, and O1 is shown in the left-hand column, which is base year, and we've reset the prices for N, D, F, and O1 to what we think today is a near-market price. And we arrived at those prices by having two appraised values. We've done those recently through appraisals and as part of the agenda items today, we're seeking an exemption for the public purpose of economic development to sell these parcels at or below fair market value. We believe that N, D, F, and O1 are actually at near-market value. And we arrived at those, again, from two recent appraisals done over the past couple of months through, at the selection of the city, where those exact prices in that column, N, D, F, and O1, are the average of two appraisals done just a few months ago in July of this year. And so, what that means is, we think N has a market value of roughly $2.9 million, D a market value of roughly $3.4, F a market value of roughly $3.8, and O1 a market value of roughly $2.6 million. We discounted the purchase price to C for a dollar for a specific reason. Again, as I mentioned, our compensation model to Newland, it's a three-tier package. And in the spirit of the original agreement, one of the things the city has been lucky to do is to use its equity that we've earned over time in the land at Symphony Park where we've created a lot of value. Instead of paying cash and avoiding a cash payment, we're going to use our equity in the land to buy down some of those expenses that are payable to Newland as they exist today. So, that 4% fee that I mentioned, which is going away, that Newland would earn upon those land sales occurring, which we estimated $4 to $6 million, that's going away. And in consideration that, instead of paying Newland cash, we are offering them an opportunity to buy and develop parcel C at the reduced price of a dollar. Part of the caveat to that is that Newland now can only use the remediation, can only get a remediation credit from the city up to the land sale price. And our remediation credit from the city to Newland has actually been reduced. I have a summary slide which will clarify this point and it'll show you the context in which we made that decision. But before I move on to the next slide, the other element is that Newland and the city have agreed to a price escalation over time. So, to the extent that they buy the land a few years out, we're getting a very significant price escalation ranging from 2% to 8% over time. So, those base prices, with the exception of C, which reflect market value, we're getting what we think is a market, a reasonable market escalation over time to compensate the city in the event that Newland doesn't exercise its right to buy those parcels today and instead buys those at some point in the future.
Before you move forward, Mayor?
Yes.
Bill, the 4%, going back to this 4%, the 4% is based on the sale of the land on parcels G and E for Newland, is that correct?
It's based on any private land sale in Symphony Park, which we believe at a minimum would include parcel G, which is Charlie Palmer, and parcel E, which is World Jury Center.
And?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, and if I could add, any additional private land sales that occur through private land sale, and we've exempted things like the Smith Center because it's not a private land sale.
Right.
It's a gift to try to support a civic project that's going to be publicly owned. But any private land sale in Symphony Park, the original intended agreement was that 4% fee would be applied to any private land sale, and those two land sale contracts exist today.
Okay. And there's a number on both of those?
Correct, there is. And that 4% fee is what I was going to show you in an upcoming slide.
Okay, then I'll wait.
So, let me summarize the Newland revised rights as we're proposing by the new relationship and then I'll get to two conclusive slides showing you before and after and how it's comparable, in fact, we think it's a benefit to the city. So, rather than paying Newland the 4% fee, again, we're using equity in our land. One of the contingencies on Newland purchasing parcel C and parcel N is that they must present a development plan and a financing plan. Our relationship with Newland all along as a developer is, we want their, we want their company to develop and we think we have a great partner. So, they only have the right to buy parcel C and if they present a development plan and a financing plan. And so, in that sense, Newland as a developer cannot, if this item is approved, on day two, buy the land for a dollar parcel C and on day three, sell the land to a third party. And in fact, we've actually implemented a safeguard which protects both the city and Newland. If Newland does purchase parcel C and N and they decide to sell parcel C, which they acquired from us at a dollar, for a profit, we have participation in that profit on the land sale to a third party over a fixed amount, which we believe the market value to be of $6 million. So, we protected ourselves and the integrity of the deal is to ensure that Newland is buying parcel C and N to develop and not to actually buy just for real estate or investment purposes.
Okay, just for clarification, are we basing the sale of parcel C, the potential sale of parcel C, and the profit that the city of Las Vegas would receive if that actually took place? Are we basing it on the $1 or are we basing it on the value of parcel C as it exists today?
It's the latter. We have the average of two appraisals which came to almost $6 million on the nose. And as is indicated in the agreement, if Newland buys that parcel and sells it in excess of that agreed market value, then we would participate in the upside above $6 million. The reason for that is, again, we're using our equity in the land to pay those fees to Newland. So, Newland, as I'll mention in some wrap-up slides, is actually losing a lot of sunk investment in their parcels and giving the city the flexibility to terminate those three northern parcels. And so, part of the overall compensation package to Newland is saying, in exchange for the flexibility to terminate those three parcels, in exchange for you not getting paid that 4% fee, we're offering you this equity in the land. So, it was a give-and-take process, it was a value-for-value process, and we think it's a fair, a fair outcome of what the city needs in terms of flexibility and what Newland wants in terms of the ability to develop Symphony Park. So, again, I mentioned, Newland can use part or all the land sale proceeds for environmental costs. In their existing agreement, they could use up to two times that risk assessment and as I'll show you in an upcoming slide, we've reduced that expense. The city is committing to give Newland exclusivity for residential development. I think this is very important. Our relationship all along with Newland has not only been as a project manager but as a developer, and we still value their ability to develop residential in Symphony Park. And we keep that termination right on parcels D, F, or O1. As I mentioned, Newland is actually eating significant sunk cost investment. They've had development rights over time and they've put a lot of hard work and effort into coming up with development plans and market studies for how to develop these parcels. And should the city exercise its termination right on those three parcels, Newland's losing all the value of that work. So, that was part of the package in our new relationship that was important to Newland in that in exchange for potentially losing that investment as a sunk cost, Newland wanted some compensation because, for instance, the development plans that they've worked on and that they've even shown this council at a public meeting for parcel F, all that investment in that sunk cost would be at a investment in that sunk cost would be at a loss. So to wrap up the deal today versus the new relationship, the first column shows our current agreements, the second column shows our new agreements. We're reducing the sale price, the combined price of C and N, and we expect them to buy those two parcels in tandem so they have money to remediate the soil. That's reduced significantly. The sale price, the scheduled sale price for D, F, and O1 actually went up, and the additional fee to Newland went away. The remediation expense from the city potentially is going down. Tax increment, as I mentioned, an important benefit, both in the existing deal and the new deal, we would keep all that tax benefit. And the potential economic benefit, and I can't stress that enough, potential, is we would potentially receive $6 million less in land sale revenue. But that's, that benefit's only realized when Newland's successful. So we really need to structure a relationship where not only could the city succeed in having development flexibility, but Newland could succeed in having the ability to acquire and develop these parcels. So we think there's some potential reduced benefit, but what we gain in terms of increased development flexibility, reduced project management expenses, and increasing the likelihood of development occurring, whether it be through Newland or a third party on those three northern parcels, D, F, and O1, we think it's a great deal that makes a lot of common sense at this point in time, given the market opportunities available to us and given the economy and the state of where it's at.
Well, I can say this, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There's a, the new agreement versus the current agreement is a $6 million swing. But with everything that you shared today makes practically good sense in the way in which it provides the city of Las Vegas an opportunity with the flexible use today, having the opportunity to make any adjustments sooner than the actual build-out period that you have listed, I believe, which was 2014 or 2017?
The current deal, the build-out is 11 to 19, and we're actually accelerating that with the new agreements.
Right. And so that 4% pretty much will be pushed into the parcel C in order to draw, to draw down, if you will, on the actual purchase of that land?
That's correct. And you can see that 4%, roughly 4 to 6 million, the difference roughly 6 million, so you can see that, that's really the difference. And again, instead of a cash payout, we're using equity.
Instead of a cash payout, you use the equity in lieu of?
Correct.
Okay. Then I appreciate that.
And just the final comparison, the big benefits to the city is development risk over time. It's the old adage, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. We want to encourage all of our development partners to build as quickly as they can. And so the existing relationship with Newland gives them a lot of flexibility, needed flexibility to develop that residential program between 11 and 2019. The new relationship, which you see the column on the right, we gain immediate flexibility on parcel F, D, and O1 to pursue development opportunities with other third parties. And at that same time, we keep the relationship with Newland and their ability to develop, should they be able to pull it off, develop those parcels, F, D, and O1 for residential. So we're really getting to both, both worlds. We're keeping our residential partner, but we're getting the flexibility to seek third parties for new development, and that could not be more important than it is today. And that, in a broader context, is where the city, the redevelopment agency, and my office has had all of its success in having land available to develop to take advantage of market opportunities. So in closing, summarizing, we're recommending approval of these two amendments, we're recommending an adjustment to the purchase prices as a package to resolve the compensation and also to increase the likelihood of development. We're keeping a backstop for mediation expense, but we've lowered the upside, the downside risk to the city and how much we pay out. We're keeping Newland as a project manager, and we're also keeping Newland as a development partner, just with increased flexibility for developing those parcels. The final comment I'll make is that we're only as successful as our relationships and our partnerships, and we have some great long-term partners and our developers at Symphony Park. The Smith Center for the Performing Arts, World Jewelry Center, Forest Enterprises, Charlie Palmer, Cleveland Clinic, and Newland, and we value those partnerships, and we look forward to continuing those partnerships to look at new development opportunities in Symphony Park. With that, I'd be glad to answer questions. I'd also invite Rita Brandon of Newland to approach today and answer any questions you might have of her as well.
Fine, thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the council? All right, say none. I have a motion. Councilman Barlow, please.
Yes, Mayor. Number one, Ms. Brandon, thank you so very much for being our development partner and bringing us to an exciting development out at Symphony Park, specifically with all the branding that has taken place. And I truly believe that this is going to be an exciting area in years to come with the multiple uses and the future proposed uses as the, as the market determines what they may be. And for that, I also want to thank Mr. Art and his entire staff from the Office of Business Development and Betsy and your entire executive staff for a wonderful job. Of course, Mayor, without tooting your horn, because no one needs to toot your horn, because you'll toot it yourself.
I will toot it myself.
I know.
I will blast it myself.
I know.
For the heavens, a clarion call.
I gotta say, Mayor, that many people didn't believe that, didn't believe in your vision of creating what you call the jewel of the desert, the city within a city. And as this development continues to take shape, specifically with the Lou Ruval Brain Institute, the Smith Performing Arts Center, the Charlie Palmer, as they continue to move forward, and the other developments onboard to come, to come onboard, I should say, this is going to be a really exciting place to interact and spend a lot of time. And I'm just really grateful to have such a major development in my ward to represent. And so this could not have been possible without the entire council really buying into the vision that was laid out by our great mayor. So with that, it's my pleasure.
Could I just say one word before you make your motion, please? I just wanted to reiterate, this is wonderful, and what Ricky Barlow has said is true, but really keep watching carefully on the development because it's very complicated and not only difficult to understand by many of the people outside of the council, perhaps even within it, but it's something that we have to be careful, that we protect the city side of it, the taxpayer side of it. And that's why the readjustments, the reviewing on a continual basis is so important. And you've been very good at providing that to us, and I'm just saying and encouraging, keeping that up in our good working relationship with you also.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, I appreciate your remarks, but I'm smart enough to know that none of this gets done without the collegiality and the support of all of us. Each of us has one vote, and unless we are of the same mind, not saying that we can't argue with one another and disagree with one another, but the truth of the matter is, I believe this council as a whole has adopted the vision that we are making this community a better place. And I am predicting that within weeks to come, not months or years to come, that this community is going to be in awe of what is going to be happening in the inner city here. That's my prediction, and that's my expectation, and it's only with the careful introspection of each council member and their expression that we're able to accomplish this. So I wanted you to know that, and I appreciate all the hard work that you engage in, in shepherding these events that are taking place in your ward.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that being said, I am looking forward to the great developments to come onboard and continue to look forward to your development experience and expertise to help guide the city of Las Vegas and, of course, walking hand-in-hand with our Director of Office of Business Development, Mr. Art. So with that, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation of approval of this item subject to all conditions.
All right, that's item 45. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Item 46, please.
Item 46, I will, my motion will be the same, to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. If there weren't children here, I'd tell you what I really think.
They've never held you back in the past.
Well, it's a third-grade class, not a fourth-grade class.
Thank you.
I get in trouble with fourth-grade classes. All right, motion carries. Let me greet the third-grade class of Mrs. Thompson. And Mrs. Thompson, would you please stand? Good. And Mrs. Barney. And Mrs. Sassy. And Mrs. Luce. And these are, these are youngsters who are joining us from the Ernest J. May Elementary School, and they're here to learn about local government, and we appreciate how nicely you sat there and you listened to everything, and that presentation lasted so long, you're probably in fifth grade now. But it's great having you here. Thank you. Now, listen very carefully to this next item because you'll want to get involved in this when you're a little bit older. This is item number 47. This is an appointment and reappointment of members to the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, which we call YNAP, and it's a grant review board of youngsters and people who are involved in the community to have a service learning program encouraging young people to take an active role in their neighborhoods. And the board consists of 15 members, eight adults, and seven youth and two alternate members, one adult and one youth, and the terms of office are for one year, and the members may be reappointed to consecutive one-year terms. And expiration of this board occurs yearly. So today, we have a recommendation to make the following appointments, the recommendations being made by the Department of Neighborhood Services, and the appointments are for the adult representative, the alternate is Jevon Banks, the youth representatives are Brianna Ford, Larmia Cece Kilgore, Gabriel Newell, Julie Monahan, Audrey Futrick, and alternate Shawnee Pamela Toledo. And the reappointments are for adult representatives, Elena Milano, Nicole Wright, Robert Munier, Donna Toussaint, David Alexander Lopez, Anthony Ruggerio, Idolina Iturralde, Michelle Thaxton, and youth representatives Nicole Vigil and Emma Tagliafari. Mr. Harson, is he here? Okay, representing our Neighborhood Services Office. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we hear a motion on this?
Good morning, Mayor and Councilman Tyrone Thompson with the Neighborhood Services Department. But you said it quite well.
Maybe you can tell these youngsters what kind of projects YNAP is involved in and how they make our community a much better place.
And let me just tell you my little presentation when I go out into the community. I say, if you had $1,000 and you could do something great for your community, what would it be? Would you want to clean up the graffiti that you see in your neighborhood? Would you want to do a big block party so people can get to know each other better? What would, would you want to plant a community garden so you can work with people in the community and just raise fresh fruits and fresh vegetables? Ah, I can't speak today, vegetables. So those are the different opportunities that we offer with our Youth Neighborhood Association Program. As you mentioned, Mayor, when they get a little bit older, when they're in middle school, they can participate and actually look at all of the projects that come before us and decide on which one should get funded. But right now, you have an opportunity with some of the older, younger leaders in your community to actually play a part. So we look forward to seeing your participation in the future, and if you want to learn more, parents and teachers, you can call us in Neighborhood Services. We're at (229) 2330, and we'll be able to help you out with that whole process.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I may have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Thanks in advance. Thank you, group, for sharing their knowledge with us in the future. I make a motion to reappoint all these people.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 49 is bill number 2010-42, amends the Town Center Development Standards Manual to correct permitted use matrix regarding minor auto-repair garages. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2010-42, an ordinance to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to correct the permitted use matrix regarding minor auto-repair carriages and provide further related matters.
Thank you. Councilman, your motion, please.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before this class leaves, these classes leave, could I just say one word?
Certainly.
I've been in education probably 45 years, and I will tell you, I have never seen these many children be so attentive as they listened. I looked at the monitor in there, they were whispering with each other, nobody was pulling a game out of their pocket, and I was just very, very impressed. And I want to tell you that from someone who's been in education a long time, and compliments to the teachers, magnificent attention.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number 50 is bill number 2010-43, amends the downtown centennial plan to correct certain maps and revise requirements for tree grades. And Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2010-43, an ordinance to amend the downtown centennial plan to correct certain maps, revise the requirements for tree grades, and provide further related matters.
Thank you. Councilman, your motion, please.
Yes, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 51 is bill number 2010-44, amends the licensing regulations to replace the hotel, lounge, bar license with the ancillary lounge bar license and makes a corresponding change to the zoning regulation. Councilman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2010-44, an ordinance to amend the licensing regulations to replace the hotel, lounge, bar license with the ancillary lounge bar license, make a corresponding changes to the zoning regulations, and provide further related matters.
And Councilman Barlow, your motion, please.
Yes, move for approval.
Thanks. Let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 52 is bill number 2010-45, repeals provisions of the municipal code relating to citizen complaints about city employees. Councilman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2010-45, an ordinance to repeal in its entirety, Chapter 2.56 of the municipal code relating to citizen complaints about city employees and provide further related matters.
All right, your motion, please.
Yes, move for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the new bills, items 53 through 55, which are bills 2010-46 and 2010-48. They'll be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, November 16, 2010. Mr. Gerber, could you read those, please?
With your permission, Your Honor, since Mr. Steve Grace is with his presence this morning, I thought I'd have him read the new bills.
All right, at least we'll be able to understand them, then.
Bill number 2010-46, an ordinance to update the description of certain city ward boundaries to reflect changes in precinct numbers or descriptions made by the Clark County Election Department as a result of annexations or otherwise, provide further related matters. Bill number 2010-47, an ordinance to adopt as the city's fire code, the International Fire Code 2009 Edition, together with local modifications and supplements thereto, and to provide further related matters. And bill number 2010-48, an ordinance creating City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District 1519, sidewalk infill, Oakie Boulevard west of Rancho Drive, and 11th Street north of Charleston Boulevard, describing details in connection therewith and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Steve. New bills, 2010-46 and 2010, if you're available, Councilman Barlow, you can be available on November 16?
I will.
Great. And Councilman Anthony, will you be available? Terrific. Okay, then these bills are assigned to you. And we'll move on to item number 56. Item 56 is to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations. May I have a motion, please, to go into closed session?
Mayor, I'm not sure we need to go in unless it's your preference, too.
I think I've been thoroughly briefed as to where we stand. Do any of the council members wish to go into closed session? If anybody does, we'll do it. I think we're all good. All right, then.
No, to strike.
Yeah, if there's a motion to strike, let's vote on that, please. Post. Post? Motion carries. And we'll be in recess then until one o'clock. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin our afternoon agenda. I did. I am signed in. I signed in as Wilson. I wouldn't sign in as Wilson if I liked it. I guarantee you, it's not going to be Wilson. All right. Thanks for being patient with us. We'll call item number fifty-seven. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Yes, Your Honor. We have one item, number fifty-eight. It's an advanced item hearing and possible action to consider the appeal regarding the notice of indecoration of client nuisance located at thirteen hundred Fremont Street. Property owner SP Fremont LLC. We've been asked to strike that item. And there are no others. Are there any other items, councilmembers? Say none, I'm making motion, bring this item forward, take the appropriate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Jerwick, are you prepared to be heard on item fifty-eight?
I'm going to hear it last.
Okay. All right. Items, so far, I'm like over two. Items fifty-nine, over five, and then over two. Items fifty-nine through sixty-two are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda, items fifty-nine through sixty-two?
So move, Your Honor, with all conditions, please.
All right. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Sure. Let me just say, the motion carries. Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name.
Ryan Lee, ninety-eight twenty-nine Glen Rock Drive. I'm the president of Mountain Trails Homeowners Association regarding the exemption on the fountain. It states that there's a sign that's required, and we don't have the dimensions or the type of sign that needs to be put.
Which item are you on, sir?
Sixty-two. It's a consent.
We're not there yet.
We did. We just approved.
It's in a consent agenda.
Okay, fine.
Mayor Goodman, ahead.
We just wanted clarification from the staff.
Yes.
Sir, if you'll talk to our planning director, Margot, right here, she'll explain everything you need to know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Fifty-sixty-three. ROC three-eight-nine-six-nine. Review of Conditions Upon the Hearing, The Applicant Owner's Garrett Group LLC. Request for a Review of Condition to Remove Condition Number Four of a Previously Approved Special Use Permit, which stated that the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configurations shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers that are grew smaller than the original shipping container size shall be permitted at twenty-two thirty-seven West Charleston Boulevard and Ward One. The staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Gentlemen?
Yes. Good morning, Your Honor.
Are you the applicant? Or representative?
I am. That was it. I shouldn't have touched it.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. I'm the Garrett Group. I'm Dalton Connors with my partner, Tom Jones.
Okay. I don't know why that has shrunk. Can anybody help the gentleman with the microphone? It's a shrunk mic. There we go.
Thank you. I'll talk louder. Thank you. Councilmembers, good morning. Your Honor, good morning. We have, we've got a gas station at the corner of Charleston and Rancho. We've had it for ten years. We had a unrestricted alcohol beverage license, special use permit, and we tore the store down back in 2007, remodeled it, and because of delaying construction, we lost our special use permit. We came back in and reapplied. On the earlier license, there were no restrictions. We reapplied, was approved, and we've been operating under the impression that we had the same license. It was brought to our attention in July that there wasn't, in fact, a restriction on this item four regarding single-use items coming out of our store. We contacted the District Planning Division, and they told us that they no longer issue that item as a special use permit. It's antiquated, if that's the right word, antiquated because of the screw-cap conditions and things like that on it. So we applied simply to have this thing deleted from our special use permit and eliminate the restriction. As far as I know, all the other properties similar to ours in our area don't have this restriction on their license. So we're just simply trying to get in the marketplace, wouldn't be competitive.
All right. Well, thank you. I think the records reflect that I live very close to the service station there. I don't know whether I'm within the circle or not. Ms. Wheeler, am I? Sort of right down the street from me. Well, under any circumstance, I don't believe that I'll be treated differently than any other.
Yes, sir, you are.
Right. Okay. I am in that circle, and I don't believe that I'll be treated differently than any other person in the area there, so I'm not going to disqualify myself from the vote. I will just make the disclosure that I have.
Yes, sir. May I just mention one thing there about that? We attended a homeowners' meeting here of McNeil Estates and Scotch Eighties on this issue a couple of months ago, and got a very, I consider very favorable response for those people attending. There had been some objections filed through the actual mailing process, but when we went to address them, most of the people, at least the response that Tom and I got from the president of the homeowners' association, and all the members that were there, spoke very highly of what we had done to that corner, the way we've maintained it, and the good neighbor policies that we've used in that area. And we walked out of there pretty much comfortable that they were okay with what we were asking to do at this time. And I don't know of anything since then that would have changed that.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right. Hearing none. To public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard on this. Say none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes, I would like to reiterate that what you said, the residents felt, is true. This was a corner that collected a lot of baggage, and you did come in there, you built a great building, you landscaped it beautifully, and you've kept up every bit of it. When you originally applied for this, as you know, we did have several citizens who, just seeing that you were going to sell singles, got very concerned. You did meet with them. You did a great job. I spoke with the chairman of that association, and they were pleased. So I moved to pass the item.
All right. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. And gentlemen, I will say this to you. When I go into the service station, your employees there are very courteous and very nice, and I believe it's been a welcome addition to the area.
We appreciate that very kindly. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Very good.
And thank you for all the work you did, meeting with residents.
Thank you for it. Thank you.
Item sixty-four, SUP three-eight-six-oh-seven. Special use permit. Public hearing. Applicant is Chabad of Southern Nevada. The owner is Chabad, California. Request for special use permit for a thrift shop, nonprofit at sixty-twenty-nine Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward One. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which I now declare is open. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Morgan-Divore. I'm going to be running the shop that's there, so I just wanted to say thank you for everybody for approving it.
Well, we haven't approved it yet.
Oh, okay.
I think I'm going to issue a warrant. I think I'm going to ask for a warrant to be issued for the arrest of Rabbi Harlock.
I want you to know that this young lady mayor, when she spoke to me, and I told her I was concerned with Chabad because they hadn't followed through on other things, she immediately went and spoke with the rabbi. And he then immediately called me and said, they were meeting, they were meeting all the conditions, but you know that situation. She has an absolutely beautiful place for selling secondhand clothes. She has a higher retail aspect to them, and done in a very good manner with good personnel. And she's got great business background. I move to accept this item with all conditions.
Okay. It's a public hearing, if anyone wants to be heard.
And by the way, the rabbi will not be there selling anything.
No. He will not.
I just want the opportunity to put him under oath.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony, one, two, three, Sir David. I only got one question, ma'am. Is it a five oh one C three?
Yes.
Good luck to you. Best of luck.
Yes, thank you. We're going to be helping a lot of charities.
Thank you. Todd Parlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Could we go back to the site plan on that? I've got a question on that. At one time, on the south side of that property, didn't they have an easement there to go to a church that was going to be built at one time?
I'm not aware of that. At one side of the property, they did have larger vegetation, which attracted a lot of the homeless, but.
I thought at one time they were going to build a church there, and there was a deal about access to that church.
Further up, there was a Buddhist community center further up the street, and that might be what you're thinking about, but not on that corner.
Thank you.
And I move to approve this item.
Very good.
Without the addendum of the mayor's about sending a warrant out.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing, and let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item sixty-five is RQR three-nine-five-nine-eight. Required review. The applicant is Chaim Gabei. The owner is Leheim, twenty-four Fremont Property LLC. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a beer wine cooler off-sale establishment at twenty-four Fremont Street. This is Ward Five. The staff recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Is anybody here on behalf of Mr. Gabei? Or on behalf of Leheim? All right. Councilman Barlow, what's your pleasure on this?
Yes, Mayor. I have no areas of concern, so I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item.
All right. The man, who are you representing?
Hi, my name is Nick Salores. My address is twenty-seven hundred Trotwood Lane, and I'm representing Chaim Gabei.
Okay. Well, there's been a motion to approve it. Do you want to enter into those waters after you hear that?
No.
You're very smart. You shouldn't have come up. You should have stayed in the back of the room. But that's okay. That's very good. Okay. It's a public hearing.
His staff's here, approval, so it's up to you. Good luck, lady.
Thank you.
All right. There's been a motion. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Item sixty-six is RQR three-nine-seven-seven-four. Required review. The applicant owner is Fresh and Easy Neighborhood Market. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor raw sale at seventy-seven fifty-two North El Capitan Way. This is in Ward Six. The staff recommends approval. Public hearing, which is now open.
Good afternoon. Lenny Scar, twenty-eight fifteen West Lake Mead Boulevard, Suite 102, representing the applicant. As staff has pointed out during the time we have been open, there have been no negative police activities on the site. There have been no complaints to business licensing. There were a number of cards mailed out, several hundred. One was returned from a property owner in Lagrange Park, Illinois. That was the only negative comment received on this. And the reason I mention that is that I believe for the residents that live next to this, we have proven that we are a good neighbor and that we belong in this neighborhood, and that we are operating in a professional manner that's compatible with the area. So I ask for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any good questions? All right. It's a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard?
I'm moving at a slow speed, whatever. It's in Ward Six. Mr. Ross, sounds good. They said approval. So it's up to you.
Anybody else want to be heard at the public hearing? All right. Say none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Scar, it's very nice to see you today.
It's good to see all of you.
We haven't seen you for a while, so let's hope business is picking up out there. That's a good sign.
It is.
I'm going to, I see the one protest card, but I received a couple others. I want to just make, for the record, we received four protest cards, but five support cards. So you guys have been a good neighbor out there. Appreciate all you're doing and providing a wonderful service to that community, that part of the community. I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item sixty-six.
Okay. That's the motion. Let's vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifty-eight A. This is a hearing and possible action to. Entire calendar?
Yeah.
All right. Bear with us. Sixty-seven. Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance letter abeyance? Thank you. And this is a time for citizens' participation. Item sixty-eight. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. Those subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to speak, please come up, give us your name, and be happy to hear from you. We'll put the three-minute timer on, please. Yes, sir.
My name is Adnan Ali, one-two-three, Sir David. I'm glad the election is over and everything, but, and I hate to say it, Oscar, but I give people advice and they don't take it, so they get hurt in the deal. But anyway, my wife is going to throw me out if Senator Reed didn't get reelected, so I tell her, hey, I got to get on down. So the president's wife was down there, and Reed was there, and I was over at that high school, and they put me right up, right straight in front of them, whatever. But the objective is, to see them in person, I stayed there almost three hours standing on my feet. That's rough on a guy my age. But anyway, it was worth it just to see the two of them. Reed, he's probably like himself. I wanted to go sit on their stool with him, but I couldn't do that, whatever. But anyway, all I'm saying is that I'm glad that he got reelected because the whole world and the nation was looking at it, and that's quite a bit. But when you get back to Pailin, that lady, and I say it over the county, you see, when McCain took her, because when he first got, become the candidate to run for the president on the Republican side, he didn't have a person to be his vice president. And I told the commissioner, Commissioner Julian and all the rest of them, I said, hey, he has to get a lady to level the playing field. So what I'm trying to say, Ms. Pailin, she, Ms., whatever that lady's name, she can go all the way to be the president, but I'm the forerunner. I told him he had to have one. I didn't recommend it. I told him he needed a woman to level the playing field. And that lady's getting so special and so great, it's outrageous. But the objective is, all I'm trying to say is that I pull for ladies all the time. And so I don't care what position we're in, public, Democrat, independent, whatever, city kind, what, it don't matter. But when ladies make achievement and are a great nation, that's a, that's something that makes us realize how great we really are. And so ladies and little girls, you know, that's my specialty. But the main thing is, I'm just saying, that lady's pretty powerful, but I feel somewhat responsible for getting on her journey, as well as I am anymore. By the way, Oscar, you told me one time that you'd meet me in Barum, but we don't need to do it. But I really need to talk to you because you're a friend. I want to be your friend. And there's sometimes a man of high intelligence says to you, oh, there's, there's something out there for you, but you, I want to discuss it with you privately. If I go up to your office, you got all kinds of hidden things, whatever, so that whatever I said, I mean between you and whoever gets it. But the objective is, there's something I can do to help you down the road. And you need it. Leave me out once. Oscar, you owe me that much. At least let me talk to you, okay? And let me see your big chair up in your office, you know, before they throw you and me both around.
It's a throne.
Is that fair enough?
It's a throne.
Well, can I come see your throne?
You may see my throne anytime.
All right, so you're going up there after the meeting, and can I get to you?
Well, we have a phone call that we have to make that's very important, but I'll see you. I'll see you.
Okay, I appreciate it very much. My three minutes is up, and I want to say, but I really love you, okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else like to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is the Lord Jesus Christ, also known as R Joshua Collins. As many of you know, the name Jesus comes from Joshua, Yeshua. And I'd just like everyone to know the Lord has returned. And the Ryan people, sexual sin and greed leads to hell. Be sober. Don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie. And if you have questions regarding the Lord's return, you can look at my website, JesusHasReturn.TK. And just recently in the paper I was reading today, that this is the worst financial crisis ever to face the state. And realizes this is fulfillment of the prophecy, the revelation in eighteen-eleven, where the merchants will weep because no one buys their cargo anymore. The Bible prophesies that there will be judgment in the form of a financial crisis. So that's the time period that we're living in right now. And, you know, I really hope that people will research the website and understand that the Lord has returned. Satan is trying to take a lot of souls to hell. I'm out preaching a lot on Fremont Street, and you guys can definitely come check me out there. Those that believe in me, there are those that do. I encourage you to continue to pray for more conversions of people, and just for more converts to come into the kingdom of heaven. There's a lot of, also, of course, corruption going on in the city. As I've spoken already to city council many times, under Nevada law statutes, chapter two zero one, good morals and public decency are to be upheld, and that's not happening under NRS one ninety-six. That's treason. And even profanity, as I've said, is against the law in the city of Las Vegas, and a lot of police have been using profanity. I know, because I've been arrested a lot for preaching and fighting for the homeless. Now, thirty-one times I've had arrests just in this city. And, you know, through those persecutions, though, through my strides, people are being healed. That's, that's, that's how it works. And a lot of you that know the scriptures know that. Through suffering, change comes. And that's what the change that Obama's talking about, that's where it comes from, is in the spirit realm first, it happens, then it is seen in the natural realm. Those of you that have questions, again, you can look at my website, JesusHasReturn.TK. There's the email address. You can, you know, go ahead and write to reach me, or believe in me, and hopefully you can contact me soon. But I live outside with the homeless, and I'm in their shoes. So those of you that are struggling and hurting, I'm right there with you, though I'm the king from heaven. I suffer with those that are in the poor and the meek positions, and fight for the poor and the meek of the earth, just like it says in Isaiah eleven-four, that Christ, when he comes, will fight for the poor and the meek of the earth. You know, so don't be too proud when you're looking at someone that's homeless, because that's where Jesus is. And the scripture says that those that mock the poor are mocking their maker in Proverbs, and I am the maker, whether you know it or not. And you all will find that out one day. And I hope that you will make the right choice about who I really am. Have a good day.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Two things. Number one, Margot ought to finger out the person responsible for that Fremont Street re-improvement thing, and bring them out, because that is absolutely amazing. They're doing wonderful work out there. And I just, that's great.
Where, where's it?
Fremont Street, where they're putting in the palm trees down there, where I am.
Yeah, I didn't understand.
You don't go down there where I am, but you know down there.
Oh, I certainly do.
Okay, all right. But I mean, it's really nice. And I mean, the new bus shelters and everything, and who's ever designed that, I think they ought to be brought up and commanded for it. Second thing, this morning, when all the kids were here, I wish somebody from the council would bring up, explain to them the art of compromise, because I heard some stuff like who, that the Newland group were presenting their thing, and some, I heard some talk about who won and who lost. And I think it's important, especially for kids that age, to understand that compromise is involved. Thank you very much.
Right, and in response to that, although we're not allowed to take action, I will state that that's a very poignant and serious observation that you made regarding the compromise. And a special word of thanks should go out to Newland, because what they've allowed us to do by entering into this agreement is, they've given us the opportunity to listen to other potential parties regarding projects that would be of great benefit to the city. And they didn't have to do that. And the city has been involved many times with negotiations where the folks on the other side fold their hands and try to, I won't say extort us, but certainly get a beneficial position over us. Newland did not do that. And Mr. Arant is very eloquent, and he's very thorough in his presentations, and that may have been lost this morning. And I think it's very important that the public record does state that we're appreciative of the fact that they have been excellent partners with us over this period of time, and have made it a lot easier for us where they didn't have to, in order for us to move forward as a city and make it a better place. So he gave me an opportunity to say we'd just go there. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Okay, then we'll go on to the next item. The next item is sixty-nine, council members' recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless such subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Would any member of the council like to be heard at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to announce that Thursday, November fourth, from six to seven-thirty, at the Centennial Hills Community Center, we will be holding a senior chat to discuss some great things going on in the northwest with our active adults. The Regional Transportation Commission will be there to talk about new bus routes. We'll have someone there from the city's emergency response team to talk about emergency preparedness, and also from Public Works to talk about the great new solar carport project that's going to happen out there in many locations throughout the city of Las Vegas. Also, Mayor and Council, I'm going to announce again that we, the city of Las Vegas will be holding a foreclosure prevention summit, November twelfth, from eight-thirty to eleven, eight-thirty in the morning to eleven a.m. at the Fifth Street School. We will have representatives there from HUD, Fannie Mae, the Realtors Association, consumer credit counseling. Several of the banks will be in attendance as well. And I'm going to also announce, Mayor and Council, the Cowboy Christmas, which isn't until December fourth, but I'm announcing it here and will in the upcoming meetings, because if you're a prospective vendor, or you have a classic car, we're having a massive classic car show, contact my office. The Cowboy Christmas is December fourth at Floyd Lam Tule Springs. And if you need information, contact my office. Michelle's in my office at two-two-nine-six-one-five-four.
What will I be riding this year?
I think Michelle's got that all worked out for you and Santa Claus. You'll be riding in with Santa Claus, of course.
Okay.
And she told me, but I forgot.
I will be on a vehicle and not on an animal.
No, you will not be on an animal or a buckboard like you have in the past couple of years. So you and Santa will ride in in style. And council members, I know Councilman Anthony's got his, you're going to enter your classic car, aren't you? Sixty-six Ford Mustang. There are going to have a lot of great cars out there. Councilman Wilson had such a successful event with his trunk or treat and the classic car show, or the cars that came out there. This should be a great time for everybody. And of course, it's free to the public to come out there. We'll have vendors and face painting the whole nine yards.
It is a great event, too. Okay, Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. Three things. Number one, I would pay big money to see you ride an animal. Big money, big money. Seriously, November eleventh, Councilman Ross, you did a great job previewing the Veterans Day Parade, which is going to occur a week from Thursday, November eleventh, here in the downtown area, about ten a.m. I think it is the biggest parade west of the Mississippi, and we always get a great turnout, so I encourage people to come out and enjoy the Veterans Day Parade. Secondly, as most of you know, each council meeting, I like to use this time to highlight a missing child in our community. This information is provided to me prior to each meeting by the Nevada Child Seekers, and is also available on their website, www.nevadachildseekers.org. Of the ten children that we have shown so far during council meetings, five of them have been located and reunited with their family. Today's child is fifteen years old and has been missing only since October twelfth of this year. If you look on the screen, you can see a picture of Destiny Etchebaran. Destiny is four feet, nine inches tall and weighs eighty-five pounds, brown eyes and blonde hair. She's a runaway and was last seen at Child Haven, which is located on Pecos and Bonanza. She is known to frequent the Boulder Highway and Flamingo area, as well as the downtown area. So I'm asking everybody just to pay special attention to this picture. The more people looking for this young lady, the better chance we have of returning her safely to her family. If you see Destiny or know where Destiny is, please contact Nevada Child Seekers at four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine, or Las Vegas Metro, Missing Persons Unit, at eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Farlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow is Coffee with the Councilman in Ward Five. I will be hosting Coffee at Starbucks, located at Rancho and Bonanza, from nine a.m. until ten a.m. And so anyone in the community looking to come out to speak with me as it relates to any topic, whether it be business or community oriented, will have an opportunity to speak with me there. So please come out. We have a great time. Coffee and tea is on me. So please come out. That's tomorrow, November fourth. And this Saturday, the National Hispanic Professional Organization will be coming into town with approximately two hundred youth, and they have identified a couple of areas in Ward Five that they'll be working in to assist me with the Clean Ward Five campaign that I established in two thousand and seven, and that's to clear the community of any trash, glass, and debris. And these young people will be inside of the neighborhoods of the J.T. McWilliam, as well as the Twin Lakes Community, painting the red curbs, as well as the fire hydrants back yellow, and doing a complete community cleanup. And there, there will be well over twenty different communities that they will participate in this Saturday. And I'm just very pleased to have these young people from the National Hispanic Professional Organization, working with myself and other elected officials as well, to come into our community to help us do a major spring clean, if you will, for the fall. So if you live in this community or would like to volunteer, please contact my office. We'll be happy to have any volunteers come out to help us restore these historic communities back to a beautiful site. So thank you so very much, Mayor.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, well, I have a couple announcements. A lot of fun things are going to be taking place tonight over at the Firefly, which is at the Plaza Hotel on Main Street and Fremont. There's going to be a fundraiser for First Friday. That will start about five-thirty. That should be a lot of fun. Then tomorrow night, for First Fri-, or Friday night for First Friday, I'll be meeting some haikus with David Figler in front of the Funk House. And then on Saturday morning, we'll have a great walk in support of the efforts against Alzheimer's, which will take place about eight o'clock over at the Fashion Mall. And then the following Tuesday night over at Mundo, which is at the World Market Center, we'll have a martinis with the mayor. Everybody is welcome there. It's a lot more fun than Councilman Farlow's coffee and tea. Okay.
Mayor?
Don't go there, Counselor, please. Let me alone. Let me alone.
I'm going to give you a pass today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess, and then we're going to go on to item fifty-eight A. Five-minute recess.